...opportunity we have here tonight to the business of our children. The school system, we ask that everything that we do here today will be honoring to you, for their hearts, for their lips, for their mouths, for God, that we say and do only those things, and we would like to live your will and help our children. We ask that our families be grateful of everything that you want us to do, in all of our actions. Christ's name we pray.
Danny, will you look please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Row call, row call. If you'll just sign in on the green button and hit the blue to confirm, to sign in. Madam Clerk, announce the attendance, please.
Parker, present. Collins, present. Cregg Moore, present. Hill, present. Lawson, present. Miller, present. Orr, present. Rutherford, present. Wilson, present.
Thank you. Next up, recognition of guests. We've got Ms. Nancy McBea with us this evening, the representative from Trane, to give out some goodies this evening to some of our students in our schools. Nancy, we thank you all for being here, for what you've done for schools, and you're recognized.
Hello, thank you for having me. Is this thing working?
Yeah.
Well, as you know, the school system undertook a large energy conservation project within the last year or so, when we made lots of upgrades to all of your schools. As part of this, we wanted to involve the students, and so we sponsored a contest, with your all's help, for students to design a light switch sticker to help people to remember to turn the lights off when they leave a room. And we have those winners here, hopefully, tonight, and we've got a prize for each one of these winners. What was I, I was going to say something. Each one of these winners, in addition to getting this special prize, their sticker in all of the elementary schools, the elementary school winner will be on all the light switch stickers in all of the elementary schools, and the same for the middle and the same for the high school. So, our winner for the elementary division, oh, and I forgot to bring my little signs. Can you get my signs on? Is, I'll show you, I tried to blow it up, so you can see it, is Ms. Abby Grace Mayfield from Valley View Elementary. You are getting an iPad. And don't leave, because I want to get you, if you could, here's a good place for her to stand.
Yeah.
Here, can you stand right here and hold this and face me? And we'll get your whole school board in the background.
Let her come on this.
Yeah, yeah.
That sounds good. Abby, can you walk up there?
We'll come around here in front of the first. This is First St. Regmoria over here.
Okay, great. Are you ready?
Good job, buddy.
On three, one, two, and three. One more, just in case. Excellent.
Good job.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, in the middle school, the middle school contest, the winner's from Jaxborough Middle School, Austin Anderson. Is Austin here? We're going to make you do the same thing, Don Hidian. And this is our site superintendent for the whole project with Campbell County Schools. I think he probably knows most of the people in the room, it seems like, but, and he has the iPad, so that makes him known. So, if you'll take this, oh wait, is that right? Yeah. And come on up here, just do, just like Abby did. Let's get your picture. Yeah. Go all the way up there where your superintendent and Josh are. You ready? On three. Great, thank you, congratulations. And our high school winner, this is a very, very cool rendering, and I hope I say this correctly, is it Dana or Dana Lee?
Dana.
Dana Lee, come on up. Isn't that pretty? Very, very artistic, congratulations. And Don, let's get your picture. Come on up here, oh, take that with you. If you leave it, it's liable to disappear. Okay, you ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Congratulations. Thank you, Josh, for having us. Mr. Poston, thank you everyone.
Nancy, could we get the three back up here, and if the board would like to gather the seats and fill around here and get a
I would love that.
A good group picture with all three of them.
Come back up.
I think that would be, I mean, it would be good.
All the way. I'll get one and I'll get out of the way. Okay, scrunchy in.
You're going to have to come over here.
Okay, ready? One, two, three.
Let some of their parents take pictures.
I'll get out of the way. Okay, scrunchy in.
You're going to have to come over here.
Okay, ready? One, two, three.
Let some of their parents take pictures.
I'll get out of the way. Okay.
Good job.
You're good.
Good job. Rose is among those thorns.
How are you up there?
Josh, I would like to say that I went up to the maintenance shop the day, yesterday, and I viewed the Trane stuff up there, and I was very impressed with the program they got up there with, you know, they could punch it up and tell what temperature it was in any room. And, you know, we got a lot of complaints about bins, so here and there and there, and they can punch it up and tell you what temperature it is in any room. And to me, that was very impressible, you know, and they ain't even impressed, but that was impressive, and I thought it was very good.
Thank you, Danny. Thank you, guys, and congratulations again, students. Next up, approval of the consign agenda.
Slow movement, Chair.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second by Mr. Orr, any discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, announce the vote.
Parker, yes. Collins, yes. Cregg Moore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Orr, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. Next up, comments from the chair. I don't have anything, I was going to, well, I am going to say that, I'm going to try to get the chair for the chief deputy here next month to do the text-to-tip program. We weren't, I wasn't able to get it scheduled into the workshop we had before tonight, but so that'll be, hopefully, next month, so we'll have the text-to-tip program, have them explain that to us, so. Next up, director's monthly report. Mr. Poston.
Okay. Let me say, first of all, how that, really proud of these young boys and girls, and that's what it's all about, what we saw here tonight, and the recognition they got here tonight. We can go home now, we had a good night. Next week will be the big meeting in Nashville of the directors, and of course, we've got a lot of legislative issues that'll be looked at next week and considered and talked about, and I'm sure, of course, those of you that are keeping up the news, there's a lot of things that are being considered by the state, and of course, some of those do affect our schools, so we'll be sharing some of those things with you, yes, as we get information from them, and looking forward to it in some ways, in some ways, I'm dreading it, but there's always a lot of changes when the legislative body gets together and irons out a few issues. First week, first full week this month, we had Read Across America, of course, that's the big Dr. Seuss week, and we saw a lot of exciting things going on, and I had the privilege to read at Elk Valley School on March 1st, had a wonderful time there, but all of our schools participated, and I could name things that have gone on in several schools, but Follitt Elementary School did, they had a family reading night, chili supper, and a lot of different things going on, but they gave away 150 books to children. These types of things are going on in our schools often, and sometimes I think maybe we fail to recognize that, but they had a great night there, as they did in the other schools, like I said, we had a great time at Elk Valley. Also, the Save the Children group that we have at the White Oak has been funded for 2013, 2014, and this is a literacy program at the school that provides a lot of reading practices to help our students develop a lot of reading skills, and that's been refunded again. We're going to be looking at working with other systems and doing some joint grant work together. I'll be meeting with some, the group from Clinch Powell, looking at a literacy grant for Campbell and Claiborne County, and we'll be doing that in a couple of weeks. Also, we've been talking about rolling out some sessions this coming school year and the rest of this school year, talking about highlighting a school policy each month, and we've got a tentative schedule that we're looking at, and I don't have my copies here with you, but I'll get this out to you, we're going to tweak this a little bit, but in the month of April, and this, I think this will be kind of timely with what's going on maybe in Nashville, and some of the things that we've been involved in for the last two years, we want to highlight what has happened with the new Tennessee Educational Reform Act, and how that those things have affected our schools, and how they'll continue to affect our schools, and we want to do that in the month of April. Also, then in the month of May, we want to talk about school safety, of course, bring in the crisis management plan that we do have in the county, how we can tweak that, change that as needed, talk about our SROs and all those types of things. Then in the month of June, talk about school physical management, and not only just at a school level, but at a county level, and hopefully, our, the media will get involved with us and help do some reports on each one of these topics. We'll send out information on the Internet and also to our individual schools, and of course, our list serve, trying to upgrade each month on these different policies. July, I'll go through these briefly, we'll talk a lot about the school support services that we have, that would be like transportation, health services, counseling, building maintenance, those types of things. We could actually spend a month on each one of those, we may do that at a later date. August, and the reason we're choosing August, as we talked about in our workshop earlier, working, really talking about the attendance policies, any changes that may come about there, and of course, what our policies presently are. Then in September, something that's timely that you just cannot talk about enough and emphasize enough, that's the bullying, harassment, social media, internet safety, and those types of issues. October, spending some time on discipline, the county discipline code, the tiers that we have in our discipline plan, zero tolerance, those types of things. In November, we're going to showcase the school nutrition, and a lot of changes have taken place over the school nutrition program in the last year, and I'm sure a lot more getting ready to take place. Of course, in January, we want to talk about classroom and playground management, and that is, that's a major concerning issue at all times, some of the things that you've got to be aware of. February, college and career readiness, and we, I can go on and on, and hopefully, we'll build on this, these topics in each month, showcase something new, and just continue to do this, and I would love to invite your participation, cooperation, and anything that you guys have to say or willing to share with us on any of these topics, we want to hear from you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Poston. Next up, recognize the finance department, we have Ms. Karen Heinegger with us this evening. Karen, welcome, and you're recognized.
Okay, your packet, you will find the January 2013 financial. The general purpose store fund has the express fee of $7,420,000. The revenues are 77.2% and expenditures are at 55%. In the 142 school fund, Rock Project Fund has the express fee of $447,190. The revenues are at 48.8%, expenditures are at 48.7%. In the 143 central cafeteria fund, cash with the express fee is $433,468, revenues are 55.3% and expenditures are at 57.2%.
What's the pleasure of the board? All three. Motion by Mr. Orr, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Piki, how did our, how did the 143 fund do? Did it, did we gain any in this report from the previous one, or Karen, or?
It might gain some.
Okay. I'm sorry, Homer, did you have something?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan.
I was going to say, I still don't understand a lot of this. I've tried to keep up, I couldn't keep up with it, and I'm not, they're your fault, it's my fault, but I still don't understand a lot of this, 141, 142, 143, I'm still trying to understand it, and like somebody said, for that reason, I'm out, but no, I'm okay, I just, I need to understand more here. I need a workshop or something to teach more about this financial thing here, that it's really big and it's really complicated. It's not something that you just come up and pick up. I know it's a budget, but it's, it's not like a budget like I use, and I would really like some help of understanding 141, 142, 143, and all about it and how it works. It's okay, and I don't mean to be, but it's, I think it's my duty to understand that, if I can get some help with that some way.
We can go over it tonight, Danny, or we can have Donnie schedule you something with him with the director.
Well, I'd rather do it, you know, I can do it personally and take a little time at it instead of holding everybody else up because of it. Now, I'm not saying it isn't good or right or anything like that, I'm just saying I still have a hard time understanding all of it.
That's a legitimate concern, and I think we need to do what we can to set up a session, maybe not just for you, others may be interested.
Okay, well, I'd be more than happy whenever you get it set up, you let me know, and I'd be glad to be there, and I'll be there.
All right, very good. Thank you, Danny. Any other?
Yeah, but with a policy, you know, we're supposed to have an orientation at all, at least six weeks after they come on board, and I suppose we haven't had, we haven't had that orientation, but that's one of our forward policies.
We didn't have, I didn't have the orientation either. Right, yeah, it's, yeah.
That's one of these.
You know, I was thinking that a real good policy would be, when a man first got elected, he shouldn't be able to vote for the first year he's on the board. Until he learns what's going on. It's going to hurt my feelings enough.
You can't vote no more than that.
We appreciate your honesty, Danny, we will, we'll set that up and invite other board members along as well, so.
I appreciate it.
Any other discussion on the, on the financial reports? Are you ready to vote? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, vote no.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, announce the vote, please.
Parker, yes. Collins, yes. Cregg Moore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Orr, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Karen, budget amendments.
Okay, in your packet, you also find six budget amendments.
Karen, what is 3-5?
On amendment 3-5, different schools, school sites have activity for the big ball games, field trips, et cetera. Any payments that the schools want to make to individuals or contract service providers needs to be counted through the Board of Education, so it's flow-through money from the individual school sites, the Board of Education, make payment to the vendor.
Okay.
That way the vendor receives one 52 form, one 1099 for the contract service provider.
Got you, thanks, sir. Any other questions on the six, how do you want to approach them?
My motion was approved, all. Resemption.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, vote no.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, announce the vote, please.
Parker, yes. Collins, yes. Cregg Moore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Orr, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Karen, budget amendments.
Okay, in your packet, you also find six budget amendments.
Karen, what is 3-5?
On amendment 3-5, different schools, school sites have activity for the big ball games, field trips, et cetera. Any payments that the schools want to make to individuals or contract service providers needs to be counted through the Board of Education, so it's flow-through money from the individual school sites, the Board of Education, make payment to the vendor.
Okay.
That way the vendor receives one 52 form, one 1099 for the contract service provider.
Got you, thanks, sir. Any other questions on the six, how do you want to approach them?
My motion was approved, all. Resemption.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, announce the vote, please.
Parker, yes. Collins, yes. Cregg Moore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Orr, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. Reviewing the bids, Karen will take these one by one, if you don't mind.
The first one is the stage curtains at the Follitt Elementary School. The bid was requested on February 7th, it opened on February 21st. There was only one bid, received in score office of five, for $9,990, and they are the only bidder, and this was, they were recommended for the bid, and this is also the recommendation of only Follitt Elementary Schools.
I make the motion to accept the bid.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor of the bid for the stage curtain of the Follitt Elementary School, vote aye. All opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, announce the vote.
Parker, yes. Collins, yes. Cregg Moore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Orr, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes.
Thank you. Next up, the canopy.
Mr. Rutherford.
I'd like to make a statement, I request this as a budget request, first of the year, and it was approved in the budget, and what I was wanting to know, if, since the price is what it is, if we could not, not accept this bid and rebid it within the next two weeks and bring the bid back with their next meeting.
Motion by Mr. Rutherford, second by Mr. Orr. Any, any further discussion?
Now, this is legal, that we can deny this.
Okay. Mr. Orr.
Karen, do we have any idea why Mount Ealing did not end the bid, or turn in the bid?
They were licensed contractor, they were not licensed. Over 25,000. But there is other company.
Karen, this same company will be notified again that they have to come back and rebid, am I correct?
Director, how does this Ealing compare with the Ealing in Valley View? Is it similar?
To be honest with you, I've not seen exactly the area at Follitt that they wanted to, but I will say that some of their product was extremely good value. They, they did, I mean, it was half the line of perfection, the material they used was far off. So, I mean, as far as the company-wise and what they did at Valley View was absolutely outstanding, really well. It's just a matter of if we can see if there's other bids that can make the bid go better.
I think the size of that was like 70 feet long, 13 high and 18 wide, am I right, Lisa, on that?
I know we did that number 15,000, and this one, it just seemed like it.
Like 16 or 18 dollars.
That's, that's really nice, that maybe go for another.
Yes, and I appreciate it, I think that would be a good idea.
Any further discussion? You ready to vote on the motion by Mr. Rutherford? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, announce the vote.
Parker, yes. Collins, yes. Cregg Moore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Orr, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. Commodity processing, Karen.
The commodity processing, the bid was requested on February 21st, it opened on March 15th, 2013, and it was restricted. There were three being entered, the Indian, Carville Solutions, Houston, Wrightford, and Hillford Supply Corporation, and are just partially detached of all their unquote. And the next bid is Pilgrim Supply, the chicken, and Carville Meat Solutions, the turkey, and the lowest being entered from the items requested, and this is also the recommendation of Vicky Porter at the school nutrition program.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Slow movement, Chair.
Motion by Mr. Miller, is there a second?
I have second.
Second by Mr. Lawson, any discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, announce the vote, please.
Parker, yes. Collins, yes. Cregg Moore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Orr, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. Permission to advertise for bids.
Thank you.
What's, what's the board, well, let's just, um, there's a whole, yeah, if you'll read them, and then we'll make a motion.
Item number one is copy paper for the 2013-2014 school year. The second item is Neil, Neil's products, past cream, produce, food, and non-food, chemical small equipment for the 2013-18 school year. Item number three is the update security equipment at Campbell County High School, Angelica High School, and this is to be funded in the state climate tournament. Item number four, preschool playground equipment at Angelica Elementary School. Item number five, surface and field area for preschool playground equipment at Angelica Elementary School. Item number six, paving and parking area and fencing at the Follitt Learning Academy. And item number seven is the class safety desk for the Grand Elementary Valley View Elementary School, Karen High School, the Follitt Elementary School, and the Jacksonville Elementary.
What's the pleasure?
Slow movement, Chair.
Motion by Mr. Miller, is there a second?
I have second.
Second by Mr. Lawson, any discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, announce the vote.
Parker, yes. Collins, yes. Cregg Moore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Orr, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. Permission to advertise for bids.
Thank you.
Um, what's, what's the board, well, let's, just, um, there's a whole, yeah, if you'll read them, and then we'll make a motion.
Item number one is copy paper for the 2013-2014 school year. The second item is Neil, Neil's products, past cream, produce, food, and non-food, chemical small equipment for the 2013-18 school year. Item number three is the update security equipment at Campbell County High School, Angelica High School, and this is to be funded in the state climate tournament. Item number four, preschool playground equipment at Angelica Elementary School. Item number five, surface and field area for preschool playground equipment at Angelica Elementary School. Item number six, paving and parking area and fencing at the Follitt Learning Academy. And item number seven is the class safety desk for the Grand Elementary Valley View Elementary School, Karen High School, the Follitt Elementary School, and the Jacksonville Elementary.
What's the pleasure?
Slow movement, Chair.
Motion by Mr. Miller to bid collectively. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cregg Moore, any discussion?
What is the scope on item six?
It's about, I think that we bided that back in the fall, if you remember, it came in with Rogers Group at 35,000, but there was another company local that wanted to bid, it didn't get to the mandatory bid meeting, and so I think at that time, we felt like not to do it right then and give them the opportunity to rebid. I think it will probably come in around 30, or a little less, don't know the dimensions exactly, and the fencing is just around the parking lot and two buildings to keep people out when they're out there.
That attachment was in your packet. Mr. Notifer, will you give us a rundown of that program?
That is an independent vendor that will come to Anderson County, Campbell County High School, and Gelico High School for three hundred dollars a, a per student. They carry all the liability insurance, they furnish their own cars, uh, they give the written test, they do all the training for the written test. Then after the student passes that, they do the actual driving portion of that test. And, uh, I think it's of good value, they just want a commission through the board to come to our school system. We have no liability. I talked to Mr. Woodward, I believe, the finance director of Anderson County. He said the school system did not have them coming to their schools now. They actually went to Clinton City. Mr. Cantrell, you might know a little bit about that.
Yeah, we, we actually had a driver's ed program, so it's a way we hired coaches, for lack of a better word, to do the job. We did not use this particular vendor, but does it, the cost and a couple of other things. So, I know, I'm familiar with them, it's who you go to if you get a ticket and you want to go do the, the driver training to get a ticket, they're trying to expand, but we've not used them yet. So, we've always used our own, we just hired our own, it's done.
Other high schools, uh, in the area have, because they can't afford to start up.
Have a position.
Yeah. So, each student has to pay their own three hundred dollars.
Yes. And probably you'll save that three hundred dollars within two years on your insurance policy. Any other question?
What's the pleasure of the board?
Don, I have an ask from Rick. Do you go recommend this, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
From a legal thing, the only thing I would throw out is if they're going to do it on Campbell County grounds, you get into a problem for now, no different than the gymnasiums, you're allowing, uh, for-profit entities to come in and provide services that are using school grounds. If it's a situation where you just want to pass out the literature to the students and let them go do it on their own, then that's a different story. But if you're going to let them come to Campbell County High School, or Gelico High School, and actually drive around the parking lot or do it there, I don't know, I don't know if I would do this without going to the financial office, and it gets into the same debate we have with gymnasiums. You're now letting your facility be used for for-profit entities, and you have to be a little, that gets scripted.
This company.
Now, now, we've got a policy, we discussed this quite a bit last year, I believe, didn't we? About letting somebody come in for profit. I know we put the nurses that used to handle that little problem, they put them out. This writer couldn't go down there next time.
That's right.
She wouldn't have.
That's correct.
Uh, okay, that's all I'm going to say about it, is if we open it up for one thing, we're opening it for everybody else, is that right?
My concern would be if, I don't have a problem, you passing out the, the brochures of letting the individual families make a decision, but if you're going to let them, you know, meet at Campbell County High School, drive away from Campbell County High School, I don't see how that's different than the Zumba classes or using your gyms for profit, would be my only, but again, that's just my, I just, that causes me a little uncomfortableness from treating that entity differently. It's not treating it more profitably.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we lay this on the table.
Motion by Mr. Miller to table it. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Oark, any discussion? You ready to vote? This is on the tabling motion. All in favor, vote aye. All opposed, vote no. Anybody wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, reveal the vote.
Parker, yes. Collins, no. Crete Moore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Oren, yes. Rutherford, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
All right. Next up, uh, section nine, items for discussion, discuss elementary school, school resource officers.
Mr. Chairman, I just put on the agenda discussion. Mr. Costin, could you give us an update on where we stand with the state? If we're getting any money?
We're hoping that, uh, we'll hear something next week, of course, to, uh, to equip the schools with, uh, with enough personnel to do what we need to do. We're talking about over four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, there's no indication we'll get that amount of money from the state in any way, form, or fashion for full implementation. Uh, so, we'll, we'll definitely have to lobby our county commission.
Mr. Cantrell, do you have any information about the state? What are the? Uh, I know that the governor has issued his request for which bowl bills he wants pulled. He wants the arming, the principals, and the staff bill pulled, but he is going to let the bill on additional funding for the state come to the floor of either the senator or the house, whoever takes it up. And I think Don is right, the word we're getting is that next week is when we should know, because they're either going to do it this session or not. So, by the next board meeting, I think for sure you're going to have a little time to do your budget in the next year.
So, we'll hold off on that maybe till next month. Item ten, discuss legal matters.
I know a couple of things. Um, we were contacted by the State of Tennessee's Office for the according school health grant back earlier in the summer, and again, throughout the fall, um, there have been some complaints raised at the state level that the according school health grant did not be administered appropriately. And based on the investigation, it appears this is not a system problem, the property is just individual. And we've been at the attention of Director Costin, and he is investigating it. We have had a statutory EOC complaint filed against us, which I believe will be bound to be broken. Uh, it is something that we're investigating, uh, we've had these in the past, we'll cooperate with EOC, but it's right now, I don't think there's any exposure to the system. I don't think that there has been anything done inappropriately at all, and that this is a situation of an employee trying to deflect, uh, stuff off of said employee. So, it's right now, I just want you to be aware that the EOC complaint is being responded to, and my concern at this level is even that we're going to have to pay any money or if we've done anything wrong. Um, the second matter I want to bring to your attention is another situation that, uh, has arisen. We have had an employee try to avail themselves of a remedy through the new state law that requires us to hire an independent hearing officer to adjudicate different types of employee situations. As you know, last year, Tennessee General Assembly passed a law that said if you take a meeting with the administrator, takes an action that affects, um, the pay or the position of any employee, then we have to participate in an administrative law hearing so that that employee has the rights. It's essentially, and Sharon was kind of probably getting much up on this the same one, when they took away collective bargaining rights, what they did is they brought in the ability for the employee that's been agreed to have an impartial hearing officer brought in, and that time at our cost, and then we had like a little mini hearing to determine if the administrator's action was appropriate. Very good program. Well, that program only allows for this process to be used if it involves either a loss of pay or a loss of position. We have a request that has been made, uh, for one that was just related to, uh, a written reprimand was placed in the file with no loss of pay or loss of position. Um, we've investigated the statute, and we don't feel that that is allowable. We're giving the employee the voluntary opportunity, we filed a dismissal motion to dismiss, so we give the employee the voluntary opportunity to withdraw the funding. Uh, if they proceed with it and our motion to dismiss is granted, then I would probably come back the next board meeting and ask for permission to allow an action where the employee would have to bear this cost. It is substantial to the tax payers to bring in an outside hearing officer, uh, for something that's pretty trivial. So, if, if we're successful in the motion, if the employee voluntarily withdraws the funding, I think we just say fine and go with it. But, and hearing officers said they want charges if that assessment. But if we have to actually have a hearing and we get a dismissal, you're probably looking at ten to twelve thousand dollars of taxpayer money that goes to the process. You have to pay the employees, not only, actually, when we were here until eleven o'clock at night, uh, probably six central office people and staff, you have to pay the employees to stay late to the hearings, you have to pay for the hearing officer. So, if, I would be coming back at the conclusion of that and asking for permission to now bring an action where that costed more by the second, it's going to be frivolous. But I wanted you to know that that was out there, so it's not a surprise. But everything else is going pretty smooth right now. Um, I don't see any legal hurdles that we need to be aware of. So, I think we're doing pretty good.
All right. Thank you, Dale. Next up, breaking ice, school board members, Sarge, Mr. Lawson, Scott, Mike.
Dale, I mentioned to you earlier, um, about the oversight committee that the commission had discussed last night in our workshop.
That would be problematic. Um, the statute is clear that once the money is appropriated to a public fund or through expenditure requests, you all, that you all aren't the funding body, obviously that has its own commission, they lose the ability to microlanage or have an oversight, but it's your always responsibility to hire the contractor to oversee the work. Um, it just doesn't work that way. So, if, it concerns me to be an oversight committee, not even the county commission. Um, my, my recommendation would be for you all to respectfully decline the assistance of the committee in operating.
And, and those invoices that they discuss, like, let me read it here, um, proposal would create an oversight committee with power to gain access to meter readings, maintenance procedures, invoices, payments, and all accounts pertaining to solar panels. That's public record anyway, right?
That would be under the Freedom of Information Act request. All they have to do is make that request again, and she provides that information too.[718.12]
To all, I'm glad the districts are over.
Fay, how much, how much, I mean, through that district tournament, how much actually came through?
Our particular referees voted over $17,000 and Tita Westaway got 18% off the top. And then after we paid out the custodial, cleaning referees, and our mileage, each school got a little over $407 with Halls and Oak Ridge taking home majority.
The percentage goes up the farther you advance, doesn't it?
Yes, yes. It was divided, the profit divided by 36 shares.
Yeah.
And depending on how many times you played it, more shares.
Okay. Any questions for Fay?
Concessions with a 100% profit to the school at all bills were paid. That's being divided equally between boys and girls basketball.
Good deal. Any questions? Thank you Fay, appreciate you. At this time, we're gonna take a quick 10-minute executive action session, executive action, executive session. It'll be 10 minutes, I promise, I'll try to keep it no more than 15. So, we'll, we'll recess for at least 10 minutes. Next up, items for action. Number A, approve Campbell County School Nutrition Department Summer Feeding Program. The program begins June 3rd and will be open through July 31, 2013. School preparation sites will be Jellicoe High School for North Campbell County and Campbell County High School for South Campbell County. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Ruthford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Crete, Vice Chairman Crete Moore, any discussion?
I'd like to make a statement. I think that's one of the greatest things that the school system does, is have this summer feeding program.
I agree. Any further discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor vote aye. All opposed vote no. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, announce the vote.
Parker, yes. Collins, yes. Crete Moore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Ford, yes. Rupert, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. Item B, approved reading textbooks as approved by the textbook committee. Journeys by Houghton Mifflin Harcourt was the approved textbook for Kades K through five. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Ms. Hills, is there a second?
I'll say.
Second by Mr. Lawson, any discussion? Mr. Miller.
We're approving these textbooks, is this, are we just proving the curriculum?
That would be the Houghton Mifflin, the Journeys curriculum that they use next year. It's the actual textbook itself, Mr. Wilson, that, I mean, they chose between, I think there was four different vendors that came out. You had one person from each school that the principal recommended. And those people all were unanimous this time, if I'm not mistaken.
Any further discussion?
That's K through five, by the way.
Any further discussion? You ready?
In the hearing, it is not really important, I guess, but most of the life systems are going away for books, period.
To the readers.
And going to use technology in different forms to do this. If you see that ever happening.
I do. I'd say in five years from now, we won't even know what, what we're doing now will not even be the same, will look the same. Mr. Lawson, if you remember, sometime in the past, I asked him to do a study on that and see what the difference in the price was, you know, the books and that, you know. So, I'm just like you, I can see us not having books in the future, you know.
Any further? Yes, Dr. Long, yeah.
When we met, they talked about that. And they're talking in the next year or two. And they are right now on e-readers. And they're also on, gosh, can't think of the name of that program. But they are having, so we know it's coming. And they even said this year at the committee meetings that chances are a year from now, it would be electronic. So, we know we're dancing that direction. But this year, because we don't have the capability, and I thought with Mr. Hannah, we just want to head to the textbook.
Good deal. Any further discussion?
Let me mention this. On the same line, we had a session the other day in Grebel, Tennessee regarding some of the technology for part test and note reading curriculum, et cetera, et cetera. In order for us just to be able to provide what they call the broadband capability for our computers, it's gonna cost like $32,000 just upfront cost. And that's just the upfront cost, that's not counting the monthly cost. And the states want us to go in the direction of using that type of capacity all the time, not just during the testing period. So, that's a major discussion throughout the state. It's gonna be a major expense also.
Any further discussion? You ready to vote? All in favor vote aye. All opposed vote no. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, announce the vote.
Parker, yes. Collins, yes. Crete Moore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Ford, yes. Rupert, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. Next up, item C, approve the Anderson County Driver Training Program. That attachment was in your packet. Mr. Notifer, will you give us a rundown of that program?
That is an independent vendor that will come to Anderson County, Campbell County High School and Jellicoe High School for $300 per student to carry all the liability insurance. They furnish their own cars. They give the written test, they do all the training for the written test. Then after the student passes that, they do the actual driving portion of that test. And I think it's of good value, they just want a commission through the board to come to our school system. We have no liability. I talked to Mr. Woodward, I believe, the finance director of Anderson County. He said the school system did not have them coming to their schools. Now, they actually went to Clinton City. Mr. Cantrell, you might know a little bit about that.
We, we actually had driver's ed programs, so it's a way we hired coaches, for lack of a better word, to do the job. We did not use this particular vendor because of the cost and a couple of other things. So, I know, I'm familiar with them. It's who you go to if you get a ticket and you want to go do the driver training to get a ticket. They're trying to expand, but we've not used them yet. So, we've always used our own, entirely our own, and done it.
Other high schools in the area have because they can't afford to start up.
Yeah.
So, each student has to pay their own $300.
Yes. And probably you'll save that $300 within two years on your insurance policy. Any other question?
What's the pleasure of the board?
I have a strong recommend.
Are you gonna recommend this, Mr. Wilson?
Yes. From a legal thing, the only thing I would throw out is if they're gonna do it on Campbell County grounds, you get into a problem for now, no different than the gymnasiums, you're allowing for-profit entities to come in and provide services that are using school grounds. If it's a situation where you just want to pass out the literature to the students and let them go do it on their own, then that's a different story. But if you're gonna let them come to Campbell County High School or Jellicoe High School and actually drive around the parking lot or do it there, I don't know, I don't know if I would do this without going to the financial office. And it gets into the same debate we have with gymnasiums. You're now letting your facility be used for a for-profit entity. And you have to be a little, that gets strict.
This company.
Now, we've got a policy, we discussed this quite a bit last year, I believe, didn't we? About letting somebody come in for profit. I know we put the nurses that used to handle that little problem, they put them out. This writer couldn't go down their neck of the side.
That's right.
Wouldn't matter.
That's correct.
Okay, that's all I'm gonna say about it. If we open that for one thing, we open that for everybody else, is that right?
My concern would be if, I don't have a problem, you passing out the brochures of letting the individual families make a decision, but if you're going to let them, you know, meet at Campbell County High School, drive away from Campbell County High School, I don't see how that's different than the Zumba classes or using your gyms for profit, would be my only, but again, that's just my, I just, that causes me a little uncomfortableness from treating that entity differently. You know, treating it as more profitable.
Chairman, I move, we lay this on the table.
Motion by Mr. Miller to table it. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Ork, any discussion? You ready to vote? This is on the tabling motion. All in favor vote aye. All opposed vote no. Anybody wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, reveal the vote.
Parker, yes. Collins, no. Crete Moore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Miller, yes. Ford, yes. Rupert, yes. Wilson, yes. Motion passed.
All right. Next up, section nine, items for discussion, discuss elementary school, school resource officers.
Mr. Chairman, I had this put on the agenda for discussion. Mr. Costin, could you give us enough data on where we stand with the state? If we're getting any money?
We're hoping that we'll hear something next week, of course, to, to equip the schools with, with enough personnel to do what we need to do. We're talking about over $400,000. There's no indication we'll get that amount of money from the state in any way, form, or fashion for full implementation. So, we'll, we'll definitely have to lobby our county commission.
Mr. Cantrell, do you have any information about the state?
I know that the governor has issued his request for which bill he wants pulled. He wants the arming, the principals and the staff bill pulled, but he is gonna let the bill on additional funding for the state come to the floor of either the senator or the house, whoever takes it up. And I think Don is right. The word we're getting is that next week is when we should know, because they're either gonna do it this session or not. So, by the next board meeting, I think for sure you're gonna go with time to do your budget in for next year.
So, we'll hold off on that maybe till next month. Item 10, discuss legal matters.
I have a couple of things. We were contacted by the State of Tennessee's Office for the employee school health grant back earlier in the summer and again throughout the fall. There has been some complaints raised at the state level that the employee school health grant did not be administered appropriately. And based on the investigation, it appears this is not a system problem, but a profit is just individual. And we've been at the attention of Director Costin, and he is investigating it. We have had a statutory EOC complaint filed against us, which I believe will be bound to be processed. It is something that we're investigating. We've had these in the past, we'll cooperate with EOC, but it's right now, I don't think there's any exposure to the system. I don't think that there has been anything done inappropriately at all, and that this is a situation of an employee trying to deflect stuff off of said employee. So, it's right now, I just want you to be aware that the EOC complaint is being responded to. And my concern at this level is even, that we're gonna have to pay any money or we've done anything wrong. The second matter I want to bring to your attention is another situation that has arisen. We have had an employee try to avail themselves of a remedy through the new state law that requires us to hire an independent hearing officer to adjudicate different types of employee situations. As you know, last year, Tennessee Democrats simply passed a law that said if you take and even the administrator takes an action that affects the pay or the position of any employee, then we have to participate in an administrative law hearing so that that employee has the right essentially, and Sharon was kind of probably gonna touch up on this too more, when they took away collective bargaining rights, what they did is they brought in the ability for the employee that's been agreed to have an impartial hearing officer brought in, and that time at our cost. And then we have like a little mini hearing to determine if the administrator's action was appropriate. Very good program. Well, that program only allows for this process to be used if it involves either a loss of pay or a loss of position. We have a request that has been made for one that was just related to a written reprimand was placed in the file with no loss of pay or a loss of position. We've investigated the statute and we don't feel that that is allowable. We're giving the employee the voluntary opportunity, we filed a dismiss, motion to dismiss, so we give the employee the voluntary opportunity to withdraw the money. If they proceed with it and our motion to dismiss is granted, then I would probably come back the next board meeting and ask for permission to allow an action where the employee would have to bear this cost. It is substantial to the taxpayers to bring in an outside hearing officer for something that's pretty trivial. So, if, if we're successful in the motion, if the employee voluntarily withdraws the money, I think we just say fine and go with it. But, and hearing officers said they won't charge us if that assessment. But if we have to actually have a hearing and we get a dismissal, you're probably looking at $10,000 to $12,000 in taxpayer money that goes to the process. You have to pay the employees, actually, when we were here until 11 o'clock at night, probably six central office people and staff. You have to pay the employees to stay late to the hearings, you have to pay for the hearing officer. So, if, I would be coming back at the conclusion of that and asking for permission to now bring an action where that costed more by the second, which may be frivolous. But I wanted you to know that that was out there, so it's not a surprise. But everything else is going pretty smooth right now. I don't see any legal hurdles that we need to be aware of. So, I think we're doing pretty good.
All right. Thank you, Dale. Next up, breaking ice, school board members, Sarge, Mr. Lawson, Scott, Mike.
Dale, I mentioned to you earlier about the oversight committee that the commission had discussed last night in our workshop.
That would be problematic. The statute is clear that once the money is appropriated through a public fund or through expenditure requests, you all, that you all aren't the funding body, obviously that has its own commission, they lose the ability to microlanage or have an oversight. But it's your all's responsibility to hire the contractor to oversee the work. It just doesn't work that way. So, it, it concerns me that it would be an oversight committee, not even the county commission. My recommendation would be for you all to respectfully decline the assistance of the committee in operating.
And those invoices that they discuss, like, let me read it here, proposal would create an oversight committee with power to gain access to meter readings, maintenance procedures, invoices, payments, and all accounts pertaining to solar panels. That's public record anyway, right?
That would be under the Freedom of Information Act request. All they have to do is make that request available, and she provides that information too.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Mr. Ruthford? Mr. Wilson? Mr. Miller?
Just one question, Mr. Costin. Mr. Costin, we're supposed to have the whole file before complete, a complete curriculum that shall be placed in each school. Do we have that?
We do, but it's, it's piecemeal now with the common core as it is. So, that'll be, it'll all change.
You need to leave that this year for next year.
It's, it'll be ongoing all the time, it'll be always changing.
But say as planned, if you say that each one copy of the complete curriculum shall be placed in each school, and each teacher shall be given a personal copy of the portion, and it'll also be presented to the court. I just, I've never seen.
That's basically your, all your handbooks that they've got for each one of your subjects. They've got them at the school, but now, we'll, we'll do a thorough investigation, make sure we're thinking about it. You're talking about a massive loss there.
And Reg, can I add something to the, you all probably, you may not be aware of this, but if the next year, if the new common core curriculum standard's going into effect, and if you've got that policy on the books, and I don't have a complete policy manual, if that policy actually exists, everything's gonna kind of be in flux right now because we don't know what the new common core curriculum, it's not set yet.
It's the online.
I think, I thought they were supposed to have it ready by June of this year. It's gonna be, everybody has to follow the same curriculum. It would be a little cumbersome to have a document there. I think that it's gonna be an online thing to juggle to.
Well, that'd be fine.